12:15.
12:15. Oh, Ben? Are we on? Okay. It is 12:15, and today is Thursday, April the 2nd, 2020. And this is an emergency meeting of the Kerr County Commissioners' Court. And that's with three hours' notice posting the agenda which we did this morning. And the purpose of this is to discuss, 1.1 on the agenda is to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action, including immediate action, due to imminent threat to public health and safety as a result of the spread of the coronavirus epidemic, as declared by the World Health Organization as a pandemic on March 11, 2020, by the Kerr County Judge on March 24, 2020, and ratified by the Kerr County Commissioners' Court on March 30, 2020. First thing I need to do is to advise all the commissioners, this is my opportunity to visit with all of us at one time, that the Governor has issued an executive order. And I know it's been distributed, but this is newsworthy. And we need to really focus on what this order does. I've provided everybody a copy of that order, and I thought that we would go over it so that the people, that you and the people know what it says, because it changes everything that we're doing. It's a standard executive order from the Governor with about two, almost two and a half pages of whereases. And then we get down to the now therefore. And on the, I think it's the third page, you'll see the now therefore. And that's where the order part of this, the mandatory part of this order begins to take effect. And what it says is, "I, Greg Abbott, Governor of Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Constitution and laws of the State of Texas, do hereby order the following on a statewide basis, effective at 12:01 a.m. on April the 2nd, 2020." That was this morning. "And continuing through April 30, 2020, subject to extension based on the status of COVID-19 in Texas and the recommendations of the CDC and the White House Coronavirus Task Force." The next paragraph is where we get the shall language. It says, "in accordance with guidelines from DSHS," which is the Department of State Health Services Commissioner Dr. Hellerstad, "and to achieve the goals established by the President to reduce the spread of COVID-19." And this is where it takes place. "Every person in Texas shall..." Let me repeat that. "Every person in Texas shall, except where necessary to provide or obtain essential services," which we'll discuss later, "but every person shall minimize social gatherings and minimize in-person contact with people who are not in the same household." The order goes on, but I wanted to start with that because I think it's important for us to know what the Governor has ordered. This is his version of a stay-home order. And it is something that applies to every single one of us, and it, the only thing that's accepted are the essential services. So with that, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. If you have any questions, this is time for us to discuss them. Because the next thing we go to is the discussion of essential services.
Very clear.
Okay. So remember, this is, "we shall minimize social gatherings, and we shall minimize in-person contact with people who are not in the same household." Essential services, it says, "shall consist of everything listed by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and its guidance of the Essential Critical Infrastructure Workforce Version 2.0, plus religious services conducted in churches, congregations, congregations, and houses of worship. Other essential services may be added to this list with the approval of the Texas Division of Emergency Management," or what acronym is TDEM, T-D-E-M. "And TDEM shall maintain an online list of essential services as specified in this executive order and any approved additions. Requests for additions should be directed to TDEM at essentialservices@tedem.texas.gov." And it has the website on here. So with regard to the essential services and what they are, the only thing we can do is refer them to the TDEM website where they are listed. And they will be the ones to make the determination as to what is or is not essential. The order goes on to say that, "In providing or obtaining essential services, people and businesses should follow the guidelines from the President and the CDC by practicing good hygiene, environmental cleanliness, and sanitation, implementing social distancing, and working from home if possible. In particular, all services should be provided through remote telework from home unless they are essential services that cannot be provided through a remote telework. If religious services cannot be conducted from home or through remote services, they should be conducted consistent with the guidelines from the President and the CDC by practicing good hygiene, environmental cleanliness, and sanitation, and by implementing social distancing to prevent the spread of COVID-19. In accordance with the guidelines from the President and the CDC, people shall avoid eating or drinking at bars, restaurants, and food courts, or visiting gyms, massage establishments, tattoo studios, piercing studios, or cosmatology salons, provided however that the use of drive-through, pickup, or delivery options for food and drinks is allowed and highly encouraged throughout the limited duration of this executive order. This executive order does not apply, excuse me, does not prohibit people from accessing essential services or engaging in essential daily activities, such as going to the grocery store or gas station, providing or obtaining other essential services, visiting parks, hunting or fishing, or engaging in physical activity like jogging or bicycling, so long as the necessary precautions are maintained to reduce the transmission of COVID-19 and to minimize in-person contact with people who are not in the same household. In accordance with the guidelines from the President and the CDC, people shall not visit nursing homes, state-supported living centers, assisted living centers, or long-term care facilities unless to provide critical assistance as determined through guidance from the Texas Health and Human Services Commission. In accordance with the guidelines from the President and the CDC, schools shall remain temporarily closed to in-person classroom attendance and shall not recommence before May 4, 2020." And we're gonna have more discussion about this next paragraph. "But this executive order shall supersede any conflicting order issued by local officials in response to the COVID-19 disaster, but only to the extent that such a local order restricts essential services allowed by this executive order or allows gatherings prohibited by this executive order. I hereby suspend Sections 418.101.5b and 418.108 of the Texas Government Code, Chapter 81, Subchapter E of the Texas Health and Safety Code, and any other relevant statutes to the extent necessary to ensure that the local officials do not impose restrictions inconsistent with this executive order, provided that local officials may enforce this executive order as well as local restrictions that are consistent with this executive order. This executive order supersedes Executive Order GA 08, but not Executive Orders GA 09, GA 10, GA 11, GA 12, or GA 13, and shall remain in effect and full force until April 30, 2020 unless it is modified or rescinded or superseded by the Governor. And that was given under his hand and seal on the 31st day of March 2020." And then attached to it, and you've got a copy of them there, you'll see his GA 14 Essential Services designation that he referenced earlier. And you'll see the 17 categories that are listed, which include, number one, healthcare, public health; two, law enforcement, public safety, and other first responders; three, food and agriculture; four, energy; five, water and wastewater; six, transportation and logistics; seven, public works and infrastructure support services; eight, communications and information technology; nine, other community or government-based operations and essential functions; 10, critical manufacturing; 11, hazardous materials; 12, financial services; 13, chemical; 14, defense industrial base; 15, commercial facilities; 16, residential shelter facilities and services; and 17, hygiene products and services. So that is now the order that we are under. We declared a state of disaster a couple of weeks ago, and we renewed it this past Monday. But this order's come out since we met on Monday, and so I wanted the public to know exactly what the Governor has done, and have a discussion if there are any questions about how to interpret the Governor's orders.
Judge, I've got a question. There've been several people that have asked about rehab facilities, okay? And we have a lot of them in Kerr County with people coming and going. But if I read what you just, reread what you just said, "in accordance with the guidelines, President blah, 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 blah," public, people should not be visiting long-term care facilities. So I consider that a long-term care facility?
It would be, and that's visitation.
Right, and that's visitation.
Not inmates.
Right. It doesn't say, it doesn't, yeah, patients, whatever. Doesn't say coming and going of patients, but coming and going of patients would fit with everything else that says in here. Because they were just people.
And I'll just, I've been working with this now for, I don't know, a day and a half. I found out about it about 5:00 Tuesday afternoon. My take on it is that the key words for everyone to pay attention to, number one is essential in these essential services. But it talks about the word necessary. And so I would encourage everybody, whatever the situation may be, whether it's at work, whether it's at home, any situation, we must ask ourselves, is it necessary? And if it's not, then we are ordered to minimize what we do. So the first word is necessary, second word is minimum. We are to do the minimum, move about the absolute minimum. And as I got in my truck this morning, and we had a lot, got a lot of things going on today, I paused, and I asked myself, and I knew where I was going, I was going to the stakeholder's briefing for our joint EOC, our Emergency Operations Center. Was it necessary? Yes, it was. Now, what's the minimum? I drove straight there and came straight over here. I didn't stop anywhere else. I did exactly what I needed to do. The next thing that I focus on in it is essential services. And the Governor does, I think, a reasonably fair job of telling us what he sees as essential services in the body of his order. Then we have these 17 sectors, essential service sectors that I read. And I read each one of them so that the public would hear exactly what they are. And TDEM maintains descriptions about those essential services on their website. And so if anybody has any questions, go to that website. And let me repeat, I got a call yesterday afternoon, I wanted to know if I was the person that was going to decide what was essential services. And let me be crystal clear, no, I am not the one that makes that decision.
Judge, I got a phone number for anybody who wants to call to see if they're essential services. It's 512-424-2208. Again, that's 512-424-2208. And that's the Austin, and they're the ones that make these determinations.
So back to the rehab facilities. There's no specific guidance other than what the Governor has here. And I think it's pretty clear, like it says, people shouldn't visit, okay? And it's up to the rehab facility to inform their patients that they should adhere to this. And I think that's it, and if everybody does that.
I think it's up to the doctor and the individual largely. I mean, if the doctor, if someone had surgery, for whatever reason, hip replacement, knee replacement, whatever, and the doctor said you need to go to rehab, that's an essential service, that's an essential function in my mind. And therapy and therapy, you know, occupational therapists are specifically mentioned on the TDEM website. So, you know, but if you want to go get, you know, just because you've got a slight muscle pull, that's probably not essential. But I think there's a, like the judge said, there's a judgment, is it essential or not?
Well, the concern by some citizens are people coming in from outside the county to these facilities. We're not restricting that, okay? This doesn't allow us to restrict it, nor shall we. I think it's just up to the facility to make sure that they, that their patients adhere to this, bottom line.
And let me off with this insight. If you flip back over to, I think it's the fifth page, that starts with, "This executive order shall supersede any conflicting order issued by local officials in response to the COVID-19 disaster." That paragraph, my take on it, and from the way it's been explained to me from those with higher pay grades than mine, is that the Governor's intent was to set a standard statewide and not have counties vacillating back and forth and being more restrictive, redefining essential services. He wanted to get it all standardized. And to the extent that any prior orders in any county does not apply to us, we do not, we did not do this. But some counties did have orders that they put in place, emergency orders, that were more restrictive than this executive order.
Counties and cities.
Counties and cities, especially in the major metropolitan areas. We've all heard about them. The government superseded those. He also, and I made copies of those provisions in the Texas Government Code, he suspended two very key provisions in the Texas Government Code, especially as pertains to us. And I want to make sure that we're all on the same page and understand. Section 418.1015, you got a copy of it there? That's the statute that appoints the Presiding Officer of the Political Subdivision as the Emergency Management Director. And so that is what authorized me to issue the declaration of disaster. And what the court, what the Governor is saying is that, to the extent that we've done anything under the power of this statute that is inconsistent with what he's got in this executive order, it is suspended. The next one is a little bit more important, and it goes, I think, somewhat to what Mr. Moser's asking about these rehab centers. That's Section 418.108. And that is, that is the section in the Texas Local Government Code that gives, in this case, the county judge, or across the street at the City Hall, gives the mayor, emergency powers. This is where it comes from, is this statute right here. And to the extent that we do anything with these emergency powers that is inconsistent with this executive order, that statute is suspended. We are not authorized to do anything inconsistent with this executive order. I can see a couple of question marks.
Well, by stating what he did, what else would you possibly want to do?
Oh, they've been doing it all over the state.
No, I mean now, at this point. Having stated that it's basically suspended.
And this discussion about what the executive order says and how we are interpreting it is a segue to the press conference that we held with the city that I'll talk about in just a minute on this very issue. But if we have anything that is more restrictive, it's superseded. And if we try to exercise any power under the 418.108 that's inconsistent with this order, then 108 is suspended. So the Governor has standardized the emergency responses from the counties and the cities.
Judge Kelly Merritt, may I respond to Commissioner Moser's point in addressing rehab facilities?
Yes, but just let me identify you. This is our county attorney, Heather Stevens, so that the public knows who's speaking.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Commissioner, I think that the rehab facilities, whether it's physical therapy or treatment facilities for addiction purposes, they will have some guidance from medical professionals on what is prohibited and what is permitted under the Governor's orders. So they will have guidance that they can look toward to regulate who comes and goes from their facilities and what types of services they offer at this time.
Okay, thank you. Very good.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
One thing, Corey Edmondson made it very clear that people still go to their doctors as needed this morning in his address.
As far as I can tell, this doesn't restrict a whole lot that we're already doing.
No. But it does make it mandatory with regard to the, "every person shall minimize" context. And so that makes it mandatory. We did not have that in place. The county did not.
Can you think of an incident, for the sake of people watching at home, where there would be any kind of disparity in what we're already doing with the shall versus the should?
No.
Because I can't think of anything, already doing it.
Well, we are. Yes, I agree.
See, I came here concerned today we were going to implement something that was going to be...
No, we're announcing...
You know, I don't want us to get involved in that. I won't be a party to it, but we're already taking every precaution. And the idea that we're going to stop people on the street and give them a fine for being free citizens when yesterday they could go to the grocery store, today they can't, that's not really going to change anything. There's not going to be anybody going up and down the road. I just want everybody to be clear on that. They're not going to be looking for you or stopping you to see your papers and where are you going and some kind of Gestapo stuff. This is America, we're trying to be smart. Make, consolidate your trips. If you've got to get groceries and gas, do them all at the same time, keep the tank topped off and all of that. Just be smart.
One thing I noticed, HEB myself yesterday, a lot of couples going in there. Try to limit to one person going, that kind of thing.
Well, one thing that could be done, that shall not be done, is to have a requirement to shelter in place. Okay, that's overstating. That's beyond what the Governor said.
And now that you mention that, let me just, I need to share with y'all, because this is the first time we've really had a chance to talk about this, but the Mayor and I have been working diligently over the past week, week and a half, cussing and discussing whether to put a shelter in place order in effect. We finally concluded late last week and early this week that we would come up with what we considered strong recommendations and guidelines that we would put out there asking people to observe voluntarily. That's where we were until this order hit Tuesday. And when this order hit, it supersedes everything. This supersedes the counties that put shelter in place orders in effect. This supersedes that. That's part of what this was meant to do. Yes, it does.
Yes.
It does. This is the now, the law that we have to follow.
This is good common sense stuff. That's all it is, common sense and people behaving, being treated like adults.
And I wanted to share with y'all, because y'all haven't been kept in the loop on our collaboration with the city. And we echo, I echo exactly everything that Bill Blackburn said this morning in his press conference. We don't disagree about any of this at all. We were discussing whether or not we were going to order people to do it, and quite frankly, I'm relieved that the government, that the Governor ordered it, and I didn't have to. That's just me. We originally were going to put together these guidelines, these recommendations, and we were diligently working on that yesterday. And that's what I said to y'all last night, and I got it at 7:00, you saw, is a draft of an additional order. Well, at this point, my construction of what the Governor did is, I don't think we'd be, should be doing any more orders, especially anything that would be more restrictive than what he said, because he said not to do it. So I didn't want to do that. And I circulated this last night, and you can see, it's seven pages, single-spaced, very, very detailed and complex. This was a draft, and we were bouncing back and forth between the city and the county. I was uncomfortable with this, and indicated at our briefing this morning that I did not want to issue an order like this. I don't think that's in the spirit of what the Governor's executive order is. And just FYI, we didn't come up with a written joint set of recommendations that we're still working on, but the city did enter the order either. So this was a constructive exercise, but unnecessary. But for you to know, and for the public to know, we are working very closely with the city and with our other stakeholders. Everybody is cooperating. Took Commissioner Letts with me today. We had him start getting up to speed with what we're doing over at the Command Center, because he is the next in line. Want y'all to know that what I've been doing yesterday, and I will finish up this afternoon, is briefing every department head and elected official on where we are with this COVID-19 situation, so that they know. Information is important, and I've asked the department heads and the elected officials to share this with their employees. We're not trying to micromanage anybody's departments. They do that the way they want to. We have tried to set some protocols in place if we get a positive COVID case in the county. And let me just state for the record, there are no positive COVID-19 cases at the county at this time. And I'm happy to report, we had one of our employees tested yesterday, and it came back negative. So we're very pleased with where we are with that. But as I meet with each one of the department heads, we have established a protocol of what we're going to do if somebody tests positive. That, and we're trying, what I also need to share is the positive case that we have in Kerr County. And I think it's important for the public to know that this is, this positive case, we expected, we thought we had it. We were unable to confirm it until we got our mobile testing center set up over at the Ag Bar. This was a healthcare professional who traveled to the East Coast to check on her grandmother, returned, and became symptomatic. And symptomatic means that you're coughing, sneezing, running temperature, achy, flu symptoms, just typical flu symptoms. And because she was a healthcare professional, she self-reported to her employer, she self-isolated herself, and has been monitored since March the 19th. So she was on our radar screen. And she was one of the very first ones tested when we opened the mobile clinic. And fortunately, she's still being treated and monitored, and we're anticipating a good result.
Judge, I think it's important for the public to realize too that the county, the city of Kerrville and Ingram have an emergency management plan. It's been activated. We have an emergency management coordinator for the county, one for the city, and there's an emergency operations center that's in effect, okay? And that's, to me, for the public to know that any consolidated information from any of those entities is there, the EOC, Emergency Operations Center, is in effect and in charge. And I think that that's key for the public to know. And if there's, and I think that that information is on county website and the city website. You might, if you will, Judge, I know there's a lot of people that are interested and concerned about, how do you get an appointment at the Kerr County Youth Event Center for, to be screened? So if you, why don't you elaborate on that if you will?
And that is a subject that I'm dealing with in each one of those briefings, so that everybody knows what to do and what to tell other folks, so that at least if you talk to somebody from the county, they know what to do. If you are symptomatic, meaning you've got your cold or flu symptoms, or bad allergy systems this time of year, you get an order from your private doctor, or you contact the emergency, the urgent care clinic at Loop 98 and Junction Highway, and get an appointment. You can't go to the mobile, you're not supposed to go to the mobile clinic without an appointment. I do understand that some people have been seen even without the appointment, because they're trying to accommodate everybody that they can. But you get a doctor's order, or go to the urgent care clinic, that's number one. Second step is, you get an appointment, because you're going to stay in your car. And the Sheriff's Department is maintaining the security out there, and they will stay in their car. They will be placed in line in the order of their appointment and progress until they actually drive into the show barn. And they've got the show barn set up as a full-fledged, full-blown clinic with physicians and healthcare personnel there. You will be swabbed, you roll down your window, and you will be swabbed in your car with people that are in full PPE. I didn't know what PPE was until a couple of weeks ago, but that is personal protective equipment. And so they're going to be in the suits, in the hoods, in the mask.
They're right. They will be screened at the facility, and then they will be swabbed if the screening shows they need to be swabbed. Everyone that goes into that facility is not swabbed.
Well, part of the screening is the swab, but I think what's important for the public to understand is, there is this initial screening, and that will be done in their car. car. And the initial screening is to rule out normal respiratory ailments that we have this time of year. Flu, strep, you know, the other coronaviruses that we learned that we get, that we didn't even know we were getting in the old days. And there is a respiratory panel that includes, I think, maybe up to, it doesn't, 20, something like that, viruses that they screened for. And what they're trying to find out is whether or not the people have one of those. That's the initial screening. And if you have that, you get treated for it. If you don't have that, if everything is negative, then you go to the next step. And that's what I'm calling the swabbing. And that's when you get the COVID ID swabbing, and it's a screen. And this is the one that you're going to hear people talk about that have done it, that it goes up your nasal canal, and I heard one guy say it felt like they were pulling his brain out.
And then down your throat.
Right. But they do all of that, and we're getting remarkably fast results here. It's, like I said, yesterday, we had a report that we had a jailer tested, and we had the results by the afternoon that he was negative.
And they sent that to San Antonio.
I'd like to ask Dub a question.
I think they're doing some of it here now.
Okay, how many have we had go through the screening, Dub? Do you know?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four.
That number came this morning, fresh number.
None testing positive?
That one.
Just the one?
Just the one.
But that one was already, that didn't happen at the Ag.
Let me clarify that number. Good point, Commissioner. We've had countless people screened, countless people screened in Kirk County. And we've had 84 tested, one positive. So the odds are pretty good. The other thing that I think is important for the public to know is, we did kind of a demographic study this weekend, and I say we, it was the mayor and I and the city manager, looking at the most recent statistics that we got from Dub Thomas, and our emergency management coordinator is Dub Thomas, who is with us in each one of these emergency meetings. So he's sitting right out here in the audience. But he sent us the latest last Friday from DSHS, and we're learning how to talk in acronyms. That's the Department of State Health Services. This is, as somebody called it today. I hadn't heard it called that until this morning, but it's fine with me. But they sent us the latest numbers, and they sent us a map to be able to see where they are. And if you can just visualize, in the center is Bear County. That's the primary area that has been affected by the COVID-19 virus in our area. And it's, and it's, they've got little dots on it, and it's lit up. Trust me, it's lit up. And if you look at the contiguous counties, whose county lines are adjacent to Bear County's lines, you'll see every one of them has multiple positive reported cases of COVID-19. They are, if you go north from Bear County to Comal County, Hayes County, and up to Travis County, it lights up the whole way. That I-35 corridor is lit. If you go east to Guadalupe County, you see that they have, I can't remember the exact number, nine or so cases over there. And even if you go south to Wilson and Atascosa County, they still have multiple counties, multiple cases. And then there's Medina County, Banderas County, and Kendall County. Medina County, and I reported on this in part of my briefing too, to make sure everybody knows, they've had three cases. They had their first case two weeks ago, they didn't have their next case for 10 days. The first case was travel-related, Philippines and Japan, got sick, went to the ER in San Antonio, and they tested her and found her positive. They quarantined her there in Medina County. She was hospitalized, she was very ill. She was actually on a ventilator for a short period of time. She is at home, well, and recovering. The other two are a couple who had a direct exposure to positive COVID-19, who self-reported and self-isolated, and they're being monitored at home and are doing well as they live out there quarantined. I talked to Judge Schuhart about it. They did not do a shelter in place, and they were able to manage everything with the three cases that they had without any incident. Kendall, Banderas County had zero, as of last I heard, yesterday. I think today they still have zero. And that's because, if you want to know why they have zero, it's because they've got less people, and they're farther apart. And that's what works. Don't talk to people, stay afar, stay as far apart as you can. I did talk to Judge Lux in Kendall County. They had seven cases. And the city and the county did not have the same disaster order there, but they worked well together, and they've not had any problem managing the seven cases that they have. And they're not under, they were not under a shelter in place order. Everybody's under the executive order now. But I share that so that you can see, those contiguous counties had more. Now, Gillespie County got their first case on Tuesday, just like we did.
Now you're going outside those counties.
That's, we've gone from primary to secondary to tertiary, okay? And we're out there, we're a little bit farther away, and those of us that are farther away from those primary centers are doing better. And so the more we stay away from one another, and as my wife says, be a good Texas neighbor and just wave. Just wave. I think the safer we're going to be. So the demographic study was encouraging, the anecdotal survey I did with the other county judges was encouraging. There is no reason to panic at this point. The one we've got, we knew we were going to get, and she's being well monitored and managed right now. Any other questions?
Just the other comment, this is more for the public, and Corey Edmondson mentioned this this morning as well, is that if there were to be a number of cases, the hospital is well equipped with ventilators and respiratory equipment, and they can convert things quickly if needed. They're staffed up fine, but the hospital's in very good shape to handle whatever comes, if anything.
You want to mention that about Stryner University?
One of the things that I think is important for the public to know is that we've been very blessed to get three weeks lead time on this thing that San Antonio didn't get. And we are prepared. And that's making a big difference, I think, because we've been able to isolate, self-isolate, and social distance sooner. And the more, and now that the governor's put us under this mandatory minimizing contact order, I think it's going to be even better. So there's going to be more positive cases, we know that. We're ready for it. There's no need to worry about it at this point, and we have the full cooperation of all our stakeholders here in the county, so.
My final comment would be really to reiterate something Commissioner Moser said, and that is that, you know, when you do go out and you need to do something, go shopping, go to a gas station, do go alone. I was at HEB a few minutes ago and saw one of their managers and just, how's it going? And his response was, overall, pretty good, however, I wish people would leave their families at home. And that's the main message, is don't travel in groups. One person can go to the store, we don't need a husband, wife, and three kids.
And as a special comment to Kirk County employees that are listening to this, last week, when we had our scare, and I ordered people to work from home if possible, which has worked, that helped us socially distance ourselves and isolate, and it's working, it happened, it's working very well, and we got to jump on it, so I think we're ahead of the game there. So let me just conclude by, the governor has an executive order that I fully endorse and support, and I think it covers everything that we need to be doing right now, and I want the public to know about it. You'll find it on our website, probably, I'm sure you can go to the internet and find it as you're listening to us talk. But if at all possible, work from home. And remember, you're limited to essential services, and you're going to have to figure that out for yourself and call in and make sure that you're working for an essential service, and if you're not, stay home. So be smart, stay safe. That's all we have for today. Court will adjourn.